Of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, individual with dignity and justice.
Mr. De Pratis. Mr. Hagan.
Here.
Glenns?
Here.
Mr. Kennedy?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Tomlin?
Here.
Mr. Wood?
Here.
Mr. Cugio? Mr. Cugio?
Here.
Mr. De Pratis?
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you. We did have a, we are going to have a closed session afterwards for legal matters. I'll announce that. So moving on to board reports. So Mr. Miller?
There was not a joint operating committee meeting this month yet. Scheduled for Thursday, March tenth. So we go with our tour of the members of the Mars area school board before the county vote. They provided us an excellent lunch from the restaurant, the lunch box to start things off. Lunch box is open for lunch during the week and the public is encouraged to stop right out. All the food is prepared by the students of the culinary yard. Dr. Hyler gave us a very interesting course. We were able to visit all fifteen of the programs they offer. The instructors were happy to explain all about the program. They were also happy to answer any questions we had. Some of the classes had more students explain to us what the class is all about. We were all very impressed how well the students conducted themselves and how much they learned in the class. We discussed with Dr. Hyler how does this reach interest among Mars students? Here was my idea of the thing. Change the time slot that Mars currently has, either first or second session. That way the students without school activities would be able to make them on time. Change the eighth grade toward to opt out instead of opt in, offering tours to ninth grade students as well as the eighth grade students. Suggest that the Mars principals incorporate discussion of the offerings at the vote tech into the pathways programs for students of all eight, of all grade levels. We thought about having a video made from, with Mars students at the vote tech to showcase how great programs they have. And then share it to all the students and parents. Look at how many opportunities that are available. Certificate, certification that each class has to offer in the respective field, which most classes have certificate, certificate. Things they were certifications. Right? For instance, while we become a certified roller, you know, so on and so forth. Auto mechanics, you can become a state inspector. There are internships available also. Local companies could benefit from that. They can go up there and offering internships to the students in their field. Kids can make money and learn a valuable resource at the same time. They just would need to contact the tech. There are employers that already work with vote tech and they have children based for me to shop places when they're done. Right out of school. The board would like to thank Dr. Hyler and all the instructors and students for graciousness. We would also like to share that vote tech offers open houses where parents can come and tour the facility and see firsthand what great programs they have. We would encourage all to take advantage of this graceful resource. There are so many opportunities and life skills available to everyone, whether they are planning to attend college or not.
Can I add something?
I was gonna say, I want to hear more about it because I, I personally missed it because I was stuck in traffic and I could not get through it. And so.
I think it's super important for people to remember that going to these technical schools does not mean you're not going to college. They have an entire computer science program there where a lot of the children working robotics, they actually had students particularly to MIT from that program two years ago. There's tons of scholarship opportunities that are available through the track of going to vote tech. And I think that we just need to kind of let Mars parents know it's not the old stigma that maybe it used to carry. And it's really just opportunities for parents. And they were manufacturing, that was manufacturing, right? Where the students were actually out on co-op, which means they spent half their day at work, machine type, and only fifteen dollars an hour.
In high school.
And I feel like parents don't even realize.
And then auto collision does that. Auto mechanics, they, they all do that.
I work with EMTs to make less than that and they're in their forties and these kids are making fifteen dollars an hour. You know, it's crazy. The options that people aren't even taking advantage of in Mars. We have the lowest enrollment there of anyone.
They have course medicine.
Yeah, they support medicine. If you want to go into physical therapy, like it's crazy.
Health system, there's a, you know, programming.
It's a thing. I think everybody should be encouraged to go and see what's available there.
It was K D R. It was really, everything was very impressive. Facilities, it was really impressive.
And we met a wonderful Mars student there who was just a joy to be around. We would love for her to come to the board and present.
She was very nursing program too, that taught us. Yeah, there was, there was a couple Mars students were happy to share. They were so well spoken.
And they also have opportunity, like if you need something welded, you can take it up there and have them do it or that kind of thing. Make some options where go work with the team, these new projects.
We all talked about sometime if we decide to update our signs, our signage for this, that's an opportunity. We supply materials that may be happy to help us with that. And some of the, we saw a sample of the sign they had done. It was metal, wood, business, crack design. They could take every piece of that project if we wanted them to in the future. We have the ability to do it monetarily. It would be something to consider. So we were impressed. Y'all thought that would be a great opportunity for us.
And now show the collaboration with the vote tech and the Mars school district. I think that would be great.
And the teachers are so impressive and they can come out of their age. They can tell they're each very passionate about what they're teaching these kids and they're experts in their fields. You know, it's not like they necessarily went to college for teaching. They were welders. And the opportunities these kids have to get into.
Professionals before they would teach.
Right. They had another, they had another, yeah, they're matching up what they do. And it was just a good experience. A lot of like.
Great, great. Sorry I missed it. I did enjoy it. Thought I did. Any other board reports? Moving on, student council.
Okay, so recently with student council, we've been planning an event for the spring that we're calling the spring egg extravaganza. It's going to be held on April third. It's just going to be outside at the mall. We're going to provide crafts, activities, like an egg hunt. There's even going to be Easter money there and it's going to be free to the public. But we are going to collect donations and we're gonna donate that to St. Louis.
What was the date again?
April third.
Do you have a time?
Um, I will, I can look that up right now.
No worries.
I think it's like. Ah, she sent me a flyer.
I didn't get you email out of all the.
It says eleven to two thirty. That's pretty much been it. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Discussions. So we are going to discuss the policy seven oh seven tonight about use of facilities. So for discussion.
We heard from her voice out last week, which was great. And I feel like it helped educate us. You know, this policy, ever since it came into play, it's just been an issue since I've been on the board. You know, it never was meant to hinder community activity and Mars residents paid their tax dollars to build these facilities and maintain them. And this policy, it, it's creating an antagonistic relationship between a community and the school district unnecessarily. The voice helps do so much for our community and charging these fees hinders their programs, which in turn hurts our community and the lack of opportunities that they'll have. I think that we need to be aware of entering into individual agreements with any one group as it seems to have that sort of problem. So I would move that we change the policy to be seventy-five percent Mars residents because that would then encompass everyone. Or simply remove the portion of the residency requirement and utilize some type of, you know, whoever is using it has to be a district resident. Like they are a Mars chapter kind of thing to kind of prevent people from other school districts. I mean, but I personally would feel comfortable with doing just seventy-five percent. Debbie sent us some great information. That was really helpful to show that wouldn't hurt any of the organizations and the school district to utilize our facilities. So thank you Debbie for that.
And the current percentage is ninety percent of the classes. So.
Well, I was gonna say, I, I completely hear what Megan's saying and I do think it's important. To understand this policy actually overall hasn't been hurting to maybe have this issue here with this percentage. And I do think it's something to be to look at because this group was here last year when we made change, trying to accommodate existing groups that are Mars groups. I think it's important to understand we have policies. We're always going to have somebody right under that threshold. But is the threshold at the right place? And I think it is important to have a threshold, you know, to Megan's point, if we take that away and just require a resident. That's establishing the group to be a resident, the person that's bringing the group forward to be the resident. That's why this was put in place in the first place, because we had groups that had a resident in Mars that were not majority or even. Maybe only the person that was the person bringing the group forward, everybody from other areas that were not taxpayers utilizing our facilities. As a discounted rate. So I think it's important that we do stipulate, it said within our borders before, and I think it's important to make sure that we are having a majority of. Taxpaying residents taking advantage of this discounted rate. Otherwise we'll be having people come from out and these are facilities that are made to be used by the taxpaying citizens. Our district. So if we start allowing everybody to come in, we're not being stewards of these facilities. It's our job to keep them up, to maintenance them. I think it is helpful to get the least reduced costs, which we're trying to do throughout all the classes. And class C does provide a discount for residents. So I agree with what Megan's saying that maybe that ninety percent wasn't the right threshold. But I do think that participation percentage should be seventy-five percent or above. So we make sure we at least have a majority of taxpayers and students. Advantage of the discount. There are other facilities that people can utilize. Mars, which isn't the only. You know, they're not the only available facilities. Of course, we want our kids and our students to be able to utilize these facilities. But we do want them to be, in my opinion, Mars residents overall, so that we're not being taken advantage of and our facilities aren't being overused by people that are outside of the district. That's my, that's my question. I take that.
Will we be able to, I don't know why you chose ninety percent to change the policy. But will we be able to just keep it at ninety percent? And then if somebody wants an exception like the council, be able to.
I think that's a better.
You could, it's a slippery slope. I mean, my personal, it'd be a really slippery slope. We were trying to get away, this is why we put a policy in place, the board before us. Those were the thing here for a couple of years, just to change last year, but the board, of course, the policy in place to avoid just that. Because then we have everybody coming for exceptions. Like I say, we're always going to have somebody under, right under the line. But what is fair? What is the majority of Mars residents for the participation percentage? So that's, I think Megan had a valid point, seventy-five percent. And Debbie brought forward that number. I guess that was what we had presented Debbie on our last year when we talked about this. That was our.
Yes, we, the policy went through many draft provisions, but when we had looked at what other school districts were doing that had this type of clause in their, in their contract, in their. Policy, seventy-five percent tended to be the percentage that a lot of districts were using. And that, our first draft of the policy had seventy-five percent. And then in subsequent meetings, decisions that cutting rates.
What was the reason of losing the reason?
There was some concern from some board members that people that are Mars residents, that could be taxed at them, could still be making a profit and utilizing that discounted rate. But we had Debbie investigate that with some questions, you know, they were asked to say, do you see that a bunch of people that were at seventy-five percent have dropped off now that it's ninety? Did you see that that was a concern between seventy-five percent and ninety? And Debbie found that that's not been the case, that we have the same groups such as, you know, voice helps utilizing our facilities. It hasn't been a major drop off. So I don't think that's a major concern. It was for some board members because of what happened in the past when people were utilizing, one individual would come and bring a group and they were a resident. But there was so much concern as to why this came in, is my understanding. That that's why that board member stipulated, let's make sure it's majority Mars residents. Let's put it ninety and. No one realizes it's going to affect people between that ninety and seventy-five percent. That was not, to Megan's point, the intention.
I mean, I can't speak for previous board members, but I can guarantee you that nobody wants to, this is never the conversation. Exactly. Want to squeeze money out of voice.
To affect.
Like that was, I promise you that.
And then we were trying to work with the voice out when we were implementing the policy.
Yeah, and I think when, when it was decided, I think maybe the first, the thought was of thinking of bigger groups. Ninety percent on a small group is, is a very small number. I mean, but when you have a large group, then that percentage, you know, it's more significant than.
Put it in a cell then? Like if it's one to ten members, it's, you know, such a percent. But if it goes up like fifty members, you know, fewer, fewer than a hundred, it's a lower percentage. Yeah. People were than a hundred. Yeah.
Yeah. I think that at a certain point, we're missing the goal. And I, you remember the voice outs don't, so there is a kid from Pine Richland, the voice out, because he lives in Treesdale, just right over the threshold. There's some kids in Seneca Valley, the voice scouts don't say, oh no, sorry, you know, you can't join in our group. They're very exclusive and I think we should just need it to seventy-five percent. That's my suggestion.
I think that we should honor the fact that they were trustworthy and honest.
Well, because sometimes trustworthy, that's in their own.
They can easily lie on their right.
Yeah, the police cops.
I'm just being honest, knowing that it was going. I think it's, I think it's important to have a policy that we can, that we get to where we think is, is fair, a percentage of participation percentage is fair and then we can do it. And there are other facilities that people can't make that seventy-five percent threshold. I think that's a fair, for me personally, to be, you know, you turned down whatever and all the things, but I think that's a fair percentage.
Well, does, can we just make a motion to amend the policy or what would our next?
Yeah. Would we have to post it for thirty days or? We're gonna make it.
Some part of the motion is to waive the reading and posting.
I'd like to make a motion that we amend the policy to be seventy-five percent and that we waive the thirty day posting so that we can alleviate some of the financial burden.
And then, and it's retroactive.
It's retroactive.
Oh, let's go. What do you guys think? What would be good for you? How about June, June first, July first?
July first.
July first. Yeah, what's your budgetary like?
July first.
Yes, July. So that's for the class C seventy-five percent, ninety.
The only group that's really affecting us is the voice out, Debbie, at this point. Yes, that's correct. Everyone else was already within that threshold. So that won't change much, which is what Debbie had called us.
And this is a false second one.
So a first and a second, um, all favor?
Yeah.
I suppose.
We forgot to ask opinion of gentleman.
I'm swerving this too.
It was, it was well covered. Very good job, everybody. I'm perfectly fine with seventy-five percent.
I agree.
Hey, kids, guys are free to say if you'd like to stay for the meeting, but I think you accomplished what you, what your goal was. It may help us and. You know, it's good to have kids and people in our room, so.
And thank you for taking the time to come in, coming here and educating us on that and how it impacted you guys. It was very helpful.
Thank you for listening.
And then boys.
A little bit of civic. You have homework.
Yeah, there you go. See ya.
Thank you very much to all the boys. Thank you very, very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, moving on to, um, on the agenda, under public comment, on agenda items. Is there anyone in the room that wish to have public comment on agenda items? Seeing none. Is there anyone on the Zoom that wish to have public comment on agenda items? Is there anyone on Zoom that wish to have public comment on agenda items? Seeing none, we're gonna move forward with the, uh, with agendas this evening. We are going to go to finance under number fifteen. Can I have a motion in a second?
Ask him first. Have a second.
Um, questions for.
Are you presenting?
I'm here to answer questions if you all have.
If you have any questions, we have.
Do you like an overview?
Sure, sure. So here's some new faces. So for those of you who don't know me, I'm Anthony Diggs. And I've been serving as the school district board council for about ten years now. So the district, uh, some time ago, before my time, uh, borrowed money through the, the mayor's general authority. Through pooled financing. There aren't many of these in the Commonwealth, but pooled financings are when an authority, like the mayor's general authority, borrows a bunch of money. I mean, they, they borrow money and then they lend it out to various school districts who come in when they need it. Uh, and the way those are structured is that the district actually issues two notes. You issue one note to the authority and they give you the proceeds back and that's how you do your project. Then you have a credit note that's issued because your original note is ordered by a letter of credit. These are variable rate instruments as a general rule. So you have to maintain a letter of credit through the life of the borrowing. So this happened back in two thousand nine and so almost all of these are gone from Mars area school district. You currently have two of these notes left. The series F note and the series G credit note. They have a million dollars left. I think there's two payments left, five hundred thousand dollars later this year and then next year it's gone. Having said that, the letter of credit that supports the F note expires April fifteenth. So you have to extend it for another year. So the process tonight is to authorize the extension of that letter of credit. You do that through a fourth amendment to your credit agreement. It just extends the letter of credit another year and that will take you through. No cost. Um, the twist to this is the letter of credit, because of the, the, the way that those are structured, remember this goes back thirteen years. The variable rate that you pay on the credit note is based on LIBOR. And LIBOR, if you know, the reason financial news is going away, the index that, that is the basis of so many calculations is going away next year. So since we're amending this, the bank is going to require we change the index from LIBOR to a different index. Again, it doesn't come into play with you unless you don't pay on the F note and the, and the, and the G note comes in. Um, and candidly, LIBOR won't go away until your notes already paid. So the, the, you know. Would we have to change this note? The bank is insisting on any amendments they do, uh, this is quite a blast. So that's why I'm sitting here. This is overly complicated for, for say, you have one year left on this instrument. You have to extend your letter of credit for one year. It comes at no cost to the district. It is the exact same deal yesterday as it will be tomorrow if you vote on this. It's just, we have to put this in place because by April fifteenth. Uh, your LLC will expire and then you have to pay the million dollars to pay it off or you'd have to pay at the bank rate, which would be. You know, you go from two and a half percent, thirteen percent. So it, it's very important to do this. Uh, it's not something we want to wait and, 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 and play with, but it is, it is literally to no effect on your financial picture. It just has to be done.
You said it's a variable rate, right? So us extending it, and I understand that this is necessary, like us extending it, does that? That doesn't do anything to lock us into a different rate. It can still fluctuate with the entrance at that rate.
The underlying note is a fixed rate note. The credit note is at a variable rate. It's based on that extended. So you don't pay on the credit note unless you don't pay on the underlying note. So again, that's why this doesn't change anything. It's about the same amount. It's a different thing. And these are all good questions, but I'll tell you, this will be the last time we ever have this, I'm saying. This is gonna go next year and, and, and everything else after this is just normal straightforward, uh, you know, school district borrowing record.
You can buy that.
Of course.
Well, thank you.
I'm not gonna lie to you, because it was before my time, I, I, I've only, this has only come up once during my tenure, we've had to extend it before. And so I had to refresh all this in my own mind before I showed up. But again, I'll be coming in a second.
And then a mayor's note is in Debbie's financial report, one of those long-term obligations that nobody looked at.
I was like nineteen, great.
Let me, let me say this too, again, because there are so many places. These pools were extremely valuable at a point in time. Uh, the pool you're in is the nineteen eighty, excuse me, nineteen ninety-six. There was a nineteen eighty-six pool or an eighty-five pool. That was before tax reform. So if you borrowed into that pool, you were exempt from a lot of the tax rules. So you got to arbitrage and make a bunch of money and things like that. Subsequently, the pools were more for those instances when you had districts or votes, so you didn't have quite as easy access to the market. Your Mars has exploded. And, and, and so now your credit is terrific, your access to the markets is terrific. And I think then, I, I think this probably led into this decision that I wasn't here. But, uh, I, I suspect it seemed like a very efficient way to get cheap money without going through the process on your own. Now going through the process on your own would be better. So that's why again, I don't think we'll ever do this again, but it's, none of the decisions made then were wrong or, or anything. It was just a different way to access markets.
Any other questions from the board? Any other questions for the board members on Zoom before I forget about you?
Yep, all good.
So I have a first and a second. Um, under finance number fifteen, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close name? Thank you for coming.
Next, we're showing for you guys is twenty twenty-three, so I'll see you the year.
Moving back to the main agenda, under minutes, can I have a motion to approve the minutes from February first in eighteen?
Sally, so move. Megan, second.
I have a first and a second. Um, questions, comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close name? So other personnel, we need to have a motion to. On the agenda under number two, to include the modified agenda where we include the boys lacrosse volunteer, the seven and eighth grade track assistant two. The varsity boys track student assistant and varsity earth volunteer, seven and eighth grade. Have a motion to add this to the agenda?
Megan, so move.
Second. Questions, comments?
Thank you.
That will be official. On the agenda, under number two. Oh, we have to vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so now under personnel, one through eight. Have a first and a second?
There's no call. Yeah, I'm second.
First and second, so questions, comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Carrie's. On the main agenda under finance. Numbers one through fourteen and number sixteen, have a first, second?
Gavin, so move.
Or questions, comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close name? Carrie's. On the main agenda, under programs, have a motion in a first and a second person, number one through fourteen.
The manager.
Second.
Or discussion and comments?
Uh, yeah, I wanted to talk about the best buddy program. So I didn't know what this was, so I looked it up. And for those that don't know what this is, it's a global non-profit student-run friendship club. So we're gonna do this in the high school. It creates bodies between students with disabilities and those without. And I guess you get paired up with someone who has similar interests. And then you communicate with them and then do like monthly outings with them. So I think this is great. I have never heard of this. And when does this get implemented and who implements this at the high school?
It's like an implement immediately. I don't know who the supervisor.
Real quickly. Real quickly is our librarian, such our teacher. And.
Mr. Minor, but, or was it Dr. Minor for her?
Okay. I think it's, I, it sounds great. Um, hopefully maybe once it's established and it goes on that we can have somebody, you know, let us know how they show.
I never heard of it either until it was.
Right.
Great, great. Any more discussion?
I'm just glad to see that we're continuing to partner with educational places so that we can get some good help around here too. And thanks to those that are going to be supervising the students.
So I have a first and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close name? Like Carrie's. So on the main agenda, under policies, numbers one through three, have a first and a second?
Second.
So I have a first and a second, board discussion, comments? All in favor, aye? So under, under number three.
Can I make my?
Yeah, you need, I need to have a motion.
Yeah, I noticed for number three, there's the, we have on our website, we have our Mars area school district sports, min and max document. So I would like to move to amend number three under other to state that we're going to approve, instead of probably the way it's worded, to approve the updating of the Mars area school district sports. Min, max document, min, max document, that changed the cheerleading min and max numbers for varsity, JV and middle school as presented. That will be changed and that's where we keep everything all together.
Starts first. There'll be a minimum of nineteen to a maximum of twenty-three.
Do you have an other second? That's JV and varsity.
Let me, and then there was the middle school. Do you have those numbers, Dr. Rose?
Which ones? Middle school? That was JV and varsity. Do you know middle school? Also, I'm sorry, I said nineteen. It was a tight one, which is six. It's in twenty-three, across the board. Yeah, on all three squares. It's a minimum six.
And maximum.
Minimum six, maximum four. Or discussion comments? Any other? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Like Carrie's. Under, on the main agenda, under others, numbers one, two, and four and five. That was second.
And we have to vote on three now, two now, since we amended it, right? We're still.
We made a motion to modify.
That subject was on the agenda, so we really didn't have to add it.
Okay.
We're just clarifying. So I have a first and a seconds for under others, numbers one and two and four and five. Or discussion comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Like Carrie's. Did I miss anything? I don't think I did. All right, moving on to the main agenda, under public comment. Is there anyone in the room wish to have public comment?
I'll say something. My name's Gary.
I just need your name and address, and then you have three minutes, sorry.
Gary King. Eleven more.
I need your address for the record.
Two or three, hang on. So I've emailed you guys over a half dozen times throughout this school year, and I've never once received a response from any of you. And had I got a response, I wouldn't be here today. Um, so I work in industry and N ninety-five is not approved for silica dust, silica dust, which is sand, crushed sand. And the particles are bigger than a virus, right? So the fact that we think there's protection from those was never true and it's been known to not intro. And I bring this up because just recently my six-year-old son asked me when is COVID nineteen gonna be going on? And I didn't know what to tell him other than when the adults decide it's on. And I mean, these, this mass thing is going to come back in the future. Do you have a different plan of how you wanna make rules? Are we just gonna follow orders? That's, that's my concern is what we've done in these, in this school district to these kids, it's a lasting effect. When a don't tell them wear masks, they really think they, the heart think that that's the way it should be. And there's a big psychological impression with, you know, needs to end in time, not protecting from virus. So when it comes back, are we gonna do something different to decide and what we're gonna move forward with? It, it is what my concern is. And if you would answer an email from me, I wouldn't be here right now. And I'd really appreciate a response and it's all I'm looking for.
I can speak to the safety plan. I mean, it's all of these boards decision, but the, the state requires the safe plan. And we had put in there July of last year, actually two years ago almost, that if there's any mandates, we'll follow them. So basically with the mask ruling, we were simply following a mandate required by the state to do so. Um, and you may have seen where districts sort of tried to buck the system a little bit, but they sort of got pushed into alignment rather quickly. So we're under the bureaucratic umbrella of Pennsylvania Department of Health and, and also P D E. So I don't wanna speak for the current board, but our safety plan was specifically written that we were at the time, the safety plan basically said that masks were not required unless mandated and we would follow those mandates. So that's what led us to follow that. Um, I guess time will tell whether there will ever be another mandate. But we didn't enjoy that either. And I, I'll apologize if, if you were sending emails with questions. We typically try to answer questions, but sometimes we get inundated with emails with opinions.
Yeah.
And I don't want you to comment because I'm not, I'm not trying to give that quote, but I'm assuming that if you, if you didn't get a response from any emails, probably you're just offering an opinion. So typically the generated response, thank you for your email, and we just take that into consideration. But if there are actual questions in your email, I will apologize because I do try to answer those um, on behalf of the board if there are questions. But when we, when that was hot and heavy.
Yeah.
We were getting all kind of opinions. So it's like, if that's an opinion, we'll put that aside and we'll, we'll deliberate on it, but it won't warrant a response. If it's an actual question about our safety plan, we're doing it. But we were simply following a mandate as, as other schools were. Which brings up an important point. The CDC just put out new recommendations. And I actually had an employee today said, when are we gonna start following the recommendations? And I said, no. So I said, but you're still contact tracing. A lot of folks don't realize is C C's now saying no need to contact trace. But what they don't realize is, once again, as we're frustrated too in the bureaucracy of all this, even though CDC is not requiring contact tracing no longer, the Pennsylvania Department of Health requires us to complete a survey every Friday, number of positive adult student cases, the number of contact traced individuals. So we're still contact tracing, and I think it's another important point. People may say, why aren't you doing that? Because Department of Health is requiring us to submit that survey every day. Appreciate your comments. Um, hopefully we will, hopefully we're nearing the end of, of some of these mandates and then hopefully we will not have to see, you know, what you were saying, some of these kids experience in the future. We're trying to get back to normal, but appreciate your comments.
I, I wanna add, but just to set it straight, somebody did respond when somebody named Josh, he went to board driver. But responding and send a board member would get back when it's been never happened.
I'm just gonna tell you, I named Gary King, correct?
Yeah.
There's, are you emailing the school board?
I, I emailed the I emailed the, the group email that says it goes to everyone several times. This was twenty twenty-one. But this year, just two weeks ago, I emailed everyone individually, thinking, hey, this will get a response. And it had, I may have gone your email wrong or one individual email wrong. But, uh, everybody was on there and there were like five questions in there.
I don't remember. Well, and as a, a role before, it's not supposed to individually respond to emails, which is something that I think we do need at some point have a discussion regarding communication and response of the board or however we wanna decide to do that. But just so you're aware, we're not ignoring you. We're not specifically refusing to answer your questions. It's just been, when I got on the board, that was part of our board training was we're supposed to be viewed as one voice, although we often disagree on things, we're not supposed to respond individually.
Good. So like you said, is there any way you can communicate with us, how to get our wins to you? Or know that they're being listened to, even though we're not, maybe we'll get an answer.
The best way to get the points to the board is exactly that way. Um, the M A S D board. Like I said, if there's a question, I'll, I typically try to answer for the board. Now, if I'm not real sure how they wanna answer, I'll maybe reach out to the president, vice president. But typically those questions will answer. But sometimes we get folks just giving us statistics and, and, and data, and we just sort of, okay, because we really don't engage sometimes.
Yeah.
If someone's real strong opinion.
How many emails a day were you getting about COVID in the heart of a hundred?
A pile of them.
Well, I, I do remember one that came to the board, that board email that was then, it gets forwarded. We do get all of those and we do see them in, to Dr. Chris's point, usually if it's a question, then he will respond on behalf. But I don't remember one with specific questions. So that may, that one, if you sent individually, may have gotten somewhere in this. Yeah, I know what happened to that one. They hit a firewall or something.
So I'll, I'll resend that. Should I send that to the group?
The board email, that'll come to all of us. It's forwarded to everybody, and then Dr. Gross can respond to your questions.
I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your public comment. Anyone else in the room wish to have public comment? Moving on to Zoom, does anyone on Zoom wish to have public comment at this point?
Aaron Best.
Uh, hi, Aaron Best, two oh four clinical court, Valencia, P A, one six zero five nine.
And so I have three minutes, Kevin.
Uh, just wanted to, um, thank the board on behalf of the Cub Scouts. Um, I wasn't able to be there in person tonight. Uh, I do appreciate, uh, it's quite obvious to me that, um, some, uh, many of the board members spent some time researching the historical policy and, um, you know, how it went into place and discussions around it. So I just wanted, as a, a taxpayer, uh, in the district and a, a leader of, of one of these organizations, just wanted to extend my, uh, thanks for you to to take our, consider our, our thoughts and, and ideas around a policy that has existed for approximately a year, relook at it and look at the fact that while on paper it seemed appropriate at the time, uh, in practicality, it maybe, you know, wasn't the best, um, thing to do. So, um, certainly with the, uh, the change in the policy, uh, I think that, um, you know, that would be better for, for all the organizations and, and, uh, you know, I think that, that you all did a great job, um, you know, listening to us. And, and I just wanted to extend my sincere appreciation, uh, to all the board members and everybody who worked on, on that particular, uh, issue. So thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom wish to have public comment at this point? Anyone else on Zoom wish to have public comment at this point? Seeing that, I'll move on. Um, M A E As or someone from the association available?
Um, good evening, everybody. It's, uh, Sharon, Nikki, how are you tonight? I just, um, wanted to say that the, um, members are excited about take your board, take a board member to work day. Um, I reached out to Mrs. Wick with, um, several names of teachers and times available, and, um, they're looking forward, uh, to hear back from the board members that are interested in observing and participate in the classroom. Um, since, uh, Marzaria Elementary had a very successful open house last week. Um, it was great to see our students have a ti- a chance to shine and, um, we had a great attendance. Um, I'd like to mention, I forgot last week to mention how wonderful the play was and that it was great seeing the students come, um, into the schools to perform for the younger students. I know, um, our students were very excited, um, at Mars, at the elementary school. This was their first, uh, assembly since before COVID, so they were very, very excited. And as teachers, we were so proud to see past students, um, in their performances. So thank you so much and have a good evening.
Thank you. You've arrived at administration. Dr. Gross? I do not have any additional proposed questions. Dr. Man?
Just a reminder that our kindergarten lottery will take place next Friday evening at nine thirty a.m. At the Centennial Gin Museum, that's March eighteenth. We enter at nine thirty a.m. at the Centennial Gin Museum. And as a recap, we, uh, our starting lottery number is eighty-four. We gave out, we started on distributing tickets on number one. We ended on number one hundred and seventy-five. We're gonna put in one hundred and twenty-five students into the A block this year. So again, our starting number is number eighty-four. And we're gonna open up to a hundred and twenty-five families. So next Friday, eighteen, at the Centennial Gin Museum, nine thirty one. And typically we've done, historically, we've done only twelve, ten, or eight.
Thank you. Hi, Ms. Branson? Ms. Smith?
I don't know if anybody mentioned to you guys that we participated in a state coloring contest. Um, this year's theme was one bus plus one driver equals a big impact on education. We chose three winners in each division. We had three divisions. I do have the winning, uh, posters in my office, if any of you would like to see them before we send them to the state on April first. It was very fun. And we have, um, prize to give to our winners, their little bus bags. Um, and we'll do a certificate and hopefully we'll have a little luncheon or something for them and the parents.
And reminder about the app. Sign up for the app.
Sign up for the app, yes, absolutely. Sign up for the app.
Thank you. Lauren. Mr. Swable, I didn't see you sit back and come on back. None? Yeah, thank you. All right. Dr. Plocher?
Um, just wanted to, you know, report that March is, um, social worker month. Um, so if you see our two social workers, Lauren Klein and Maggie McCall, say thank you. Um, they do a wonderful job in our district. They also, on February twenty-first, I believe it's twenty-first, um, at our in-service, they did a training on social emotional learning, um, to its staff in grade seven and twelve, seven through twelve. We weren't able to do it for the elementary staff because we had, uh, cancel our in-service in January due to inclement weather, so we're going to schedule that. Um, they taught strategies for teachers to provide to students, but also self-care strategies and techniques for our teachers and, and staff. Um, to continue with that, uh, on that day, we had our wellness committee. So, um, thank you, Ms. McKenna and Mrs. Wick for attending and the community members, um, who attended that as well. And to continue with the theme of social emotional learning, the counselors and I are going to do a free, um, webinar, um, through Center for Community Resources on the twelfth bit to talk about trauma-sensitive strategies, um, for students. Um, so to get a little more information so we can help our students out.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Gross?
Just a few announcements. Um, parent conference day is coming up, uh, on K to eight, eight to three thirty. Um, sent out a middle school reminder today to all parents. Uh, it's quickly, we're quickly approaching also the end of the third nine weeks, March twenty-second. Some report cards will be generated and available April fifth. I sent out a save the date. We are running our eighth grade recognition program this year, uh, face to face. Save the date is May twenty-fifth. That'll be a six to about seven thirty program. After that program, we, um, bring the students over, eighth grade students over. Uh, they do have a dance in the evening. The next day, we typically go to Cedar Point, um, with that class. But because we are, uh, before the Memorial Day holiday, Cedar Point is not open that day. So that's why we had to schedule our Cedar Point trip, um, for Monday, May twenty-third. So it's a little backwards this year. Going Cedar Point first, practice recognition, uh, on Tuesday, recognition on Wednesday. So that's the, uh, that's the plan for our recognition program. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carson?
Parent teacher conferences again, uh, staff and centennial will be sending out through email digitally sign up. Uh, it's been successful in the past, so we're gonna continue to do that. It's a nice, quick, easy. Uh, also, fourth grade visiting the Centennial School at the end of the month. So Mr. Lake and I have worked together. Two days, we have planned that they'll come up. And what we do is we have our sixth graders, break them down into smaller groups. They walk them through the Centennial School and the fourth graders have an opportunity to ask sixth graders questions, so it's not like they're asking them about. And then they'll all come together in the cafeteria. I do about a ten-minute presentation for them. Uh, give them a little insight what's about to come, so. And then finally, thank you again. I know Mr. Carson sent out an email to all of you for our act ninety-three, um, working with us. It was nice, easy, and I think we all appreciate everything that was in it. So thank you again.
Thank you. It's hard to believe it's like wrapping up the year and looking forward so much, that much closer to next year. Hey, Ms. Amy, Mr. Ray? Board comments? I just wanted to start.
I just, I went to the play and it was phenomenal. So I really appreciated that. I was impressed. It seemed like a professional Broadway production. Stage, the, the, um, props, the cast, everything was, I was really impressed.
I don't really have anything. I, I guess I just appreciate everybody working together to resolve the Boy Scouts thing and, um, just hope for the continue making progress.
Side.
It's super great marketing to take the play to the elementary school. Cause I probably wouldn't have got to take my kids to the Drowsy Chaperone if they came home and demanded it. And it was amazing. They're so talented. And just a friendly reminder, if you are a senior or the current of a senior, most scholarship applications to the Mars Planet Foundation are due April first. So there's scholarship for everyone.
Thanks to everybody. Appreciate all your time. If you're not. If you're not thinking about both texts, consider it. It is. There's, there's a lot of good things that are for, and I think a lot of people are looking.
Uh, we were invited to go to the science fair, so I am going to those schools. I'm excited about that. Centennial's gonna have forty, forty-five students, um, doing their science experiments for the show. And the elementary school has a hundred and seventy-two students that are participating in this science fair. So it's going to be a lot of fun and I look forward to, um, seeing all their projects.
I will be in the science fair. So I want everyone to know I didn't help them at all. So when you see. Wait till you see it, Mr. Colson. You'll be assured.
That's what they all say.
It's like, you know, who has something to do with it? Who doesn't? We black round out. He needs explained.
I want you to just make sure you look at the minimal amounts of effort Eddie Len's putting into the.
Listen, I make, I make a point to get at every group, so they have to explain it.
I was like, it's just a plain whiteboard with some words on it. He goes, signs doesn't have to be pretty.
Can't argue with them.
I think you can next to somebody else.
Awesome. Um, any other more comments? We will have a closed session afterwards for, um, legal. Have a motion to adjourn?
Megan, second.
Kevin, second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Have a good night, everyone.